Thank you for everyone being here. Let's stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the audience of any citizen. The FGC board trustees will hear any citizen who wishes to address the board on a one-time basis pertaining to a relevant topic. If the board wishes to hear more about the topic, that topic will be scheduled for a meeting of the board. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and the time dedicated to this topic will not exceed 20 minutes. We have Mr. Lecker on the list to speak. Not tonight? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Next item is approval of the March 13th, 2025 board minutes. You should have had an opportunity to review them. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Dr. Tepadino, Dr. Surrancey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Next item is our student government report. I see we have our representative. Come on up.
Good afternoon, everyone. Student government is wrapping up the spring semester and hoping to go out with a bang. On April 16, we're hosting our annual spring fling event. During this event, we will also be holding SGA elections, so with any luck, I'll be introducing SGA's new president at one of our upcoming meetings. On April 17, we'll host our final trivia night of the semester. The theme is finish the lyrics, and BP Tony and BP Holloway will always bring some tough competition. Hopefully, they'll be able to join us again for the fun. On April 22 and 23, we'll be hosting Earth Day by giving students cacti and succulents to plant and take home. Finally, on April 29 and 30, we'll hold a graduation cap decorating event. Keep an eye out for graduation. You might spot some of our students' creativity on full display. That concludes my report.
So this is your last meeting with us?
Yes, sir.
Because you'll be at the national championships in May.
That's awesome. And we have really enjoyed having you come, give your reports, and all the stuff you've done and been a part of.
I'm thankful for the opportunity to do it. Thanks so much.
She just got accepted to Valdosta State, she's going to be part of their cheer team, too.
That's awesome. All right, our next item is the presentation of the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are routine business, state directives, and/or compliance items. All items have been reviewed by the board attorney and have been available to the board for its examination. Any trustee can request a topic to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion. Topographical errors will be noted and corrected in the board minutes. So I'm assuming everyone has had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board member wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Dr. Surrancey.
Approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Medina, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Our next item is academic affairs.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Chair. We've had a busy month in academics. In the nursing side, our faculty and administrators, along with Lee and Dr. Barrett, attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new tower at HCA Florida Lake City Hospital, where the foundation was presented with a $5,000 check to support nursing scholarships. Obviously, we're excited for that commitment to the program. And recently, we also received the line funding, which has already been used to acquire simulation training equipment. Purchases include hospital beds, IV pumps, cardiac monitors, crash carts, VR headsets, and more. We are excited to use these resources to continue enhancing students' hands-on experiential learning opportunities. In teaching, our Future Teachers Club hosted the Spring Break Book Fair, with all proceeds going towards the purchase of books for our local schools. We have a special thanks to Allison Zarnicky for leading this effort. And in connection with the book fair, the teaching program also hosted Literacy Night on April 2, featuring games and storytime. We're especially proud of our very own published author, Dr. Elizabeth Carroll, who entertained attendees by reading her children's book, Oh, Henry. In workforce, our fire program held four continuing education trainings for our local agencies, ranging from Baker County to Lake City, using our burn building to conduct exercises that they're otherwise unable to do. And as a thank you for these efforts and in seeking to continue growing our partnership, Baker County Fire Rescue just donated over $10,000 worth of equipment to include vehicle extraction tools, cutters, pumps, long ramps, hoses, and more. I want to give a special thank you to Chief Trevor Nelson. He's been an incredible advocate for FGC and that program. Law enforcement, we just received three brand-new SUVs funded through a recently obtained grant. As SUVs have become increasingly common in the field, especially in our region, we're excited at the opportunity to offer students training experiences that will actually reflect what they're going to go on and do in the field. Renovations across our facilities are progressing steadily. Our greenhouses are nearing completion. We're hoping for a summer availability date where we can open that facility. And the HVAC lab is now enclosed and wired, with flooring and classroom preparations being set up next. We're hopeful, hopefully, to have that up and live in the fall. And then last is the second chance, in our Second Chance Pell Program, one of our graduates, Derek Graham, just earned his master's degree from St. Leo and took a job as the plant manager, at a plant manager position at a private wastewater treatment location in Jacksonville. And I think that's a heck of a testament to the power of that program's ability to change lives. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
All right, I'm going to transition real quick, still part of the academics. I'm going to bring up Dr. Michael Baker, and he's going to talk about some of the successes of our study abroad program. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the trustees and Dr. Barrett and guests as well. Thank you for coming. So this summer, '24, FGC had its third study abroad program. We took eight students over to the United Kingdom. Oh, yes, and you can actually look at the screen, and you should be able to see some photos of our students as I talk. But we spent two weeks at Harleken College and then one week in London. Students earned six credits by taking two classes, an art class and a literature class. Some of the official excursions, we went to places like Oxford, Cambridge, York, Leicester, Leeds, and of course, London. Optional excursions, went to places like the Peak District, Alton Towers, which is the UK's largest theme park, Attenborough Nature Preserve near Nottingham, and some of us went to the Black Plate Museum. Our students were great ambassadors. The Harleken College staff spoke very highly of them. And I would like to point out that two of our students, including that young lady right there who's in the audience, won Gilman scholarships from the US State Department. Val Myers and Ashley Rayburg won those scholarships. Now, there is no 2025 study abroad program, but the administration has met with some faculty members about possible 2026 locations. I think we're talking about perhaps a couple places in Central America or perhaps Ireland for 2026. Now, the second of three things that I wanted to talk about briefly tonight, I wanted to thank the board for approving my Fall 2024 sabbatical. What I did is I went over and served as a visiting professor at Harleken College. And while I was there, I found a couple things out that could help our students and actually already has helped our students. The First Scholars Program is a program that they do, which is kind of like a study abroad version of our trio program. It's aimed at first-generation students, and it's kind of a mentorship program where they talk about academic, professional, and personal success. And it also comes with a rather hefty scholarship. And if some of our students got the First Scholars Scholarship and the Gilman Scholarship, they could actually spend a 15-week semester abroad for about the same price as our three-week program. So that is a potentially, you know, very awesome opportunity. And the second thing, while I was over there, I learned more about Harleken's internship program, and that leads me into point or topic number three for today. I would like to introduce Julian Klaus, better known as Jack. Julian was a member, or Jack was a member of our 2024 study abroad program, and when I learned more about the internship program, I sent it out to our recent study abroad alumni. And Jack was brave enough to say, you know what? I'm going to apply. And she was selected. So from July through December, Jack will serve as the Photography, Social Media, and Design Intern at Harleken College over in the UK. So, Jack, would you mind standing up? And could we perhaps give Jack a round of applause? Now, it is traditional, whenever we go over for study abroad, we take an FGC mascot. So I do have an FGC mascot to present to you. And there's also a little bag in here with a card and maybe a couple other things as well. But thank you so much for your attention, and thank the board of trustees, Dr. Barrett, for enabling and supporting the students and faculty for exploring this amazing world of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is student affairs and public information. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board of trustees. I am proud to report that our women's flag football team has secured the first-ever Sun Lakes Conference Championship by defeating Daytona State last night by a decisive score of 42 to 6. We are honored to be hosting the Sun Lakes Conference Tournament on April 26 for the flag football team. Additionally, the FSCAA has recognized two of our athletes as Player of the Week just this week. London Jenkins, a freshman linebacker from Jacksonville, Florida, was named Defensive Player of the Week, and Caleb Ludwig, a sophomore quarterback from Tampa, Florida, threw for 777 yards, 15 touchdowns, in addition to 10 extra points over five games. I think it's safe to say Tom Brady might not be the greatest quarterback to come out of Tampa. I'm also very proud to report that London Jenkins and Alex Harris have made the 18-player US Women's Flag National Team roster and will represent the United States at the World Games in Chengdu, China this summer. The final roster will be pared down to 12 later on, but they'll keep a player pool until the Olympics in Los Angeles. So they are the two youngest players on the Olympic roster, which positions them very well for hopefully an Olympic debut. So we're excited about that. In softball, our team is currently on a six-game winning streak and is strong contention for a spot in the conference and district tournament for the first time after our second year. In esports, who I haven't talked a whole lot about, but they are definitely out there doing great things, Gianna Gianni Tanetti, the pride of the FGC Smash Squad, just wrapped up an undefeated 7-0 season in Super Smash Bros. Ultimate. And tonight, the FGC Valorant team hits the servers with one mission, closed out the season undefeated, currently sitting at 7-0. The team is gearing up for their final regular season match. We're also excited to unveil the 2025 FGC Youth Summer Camp schedule. It is live and online. This year's program will offer camps in a diverse line of sports and academics, from running to theater, art, and STEM. STEM will sell out. STEM will be the first camp, so everybody in here that's planning on sending any children to STEM or anybody watching out there on TV land, please get your child signed up immediately because those spots will fill early and often. So we're kind of excited that it's an academic camp that fills first. And finally, we are preparing for the upcoming Spring Fling College Fair and Transfer Day on Wednesday, April 16, which will feature the campus blood drive in partnership with the Life South Community Blood Centers. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions? Yes?
Do we have the ages again? Because I know that they were kind of teasing those out a year ago, and I've got a couple kids that are chomping at the bit.
Eight is where we start, and 14, I think, is the oldest.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next is enrollment and marking.
Thank you. Good evening. Summer registration began two weeks ago on March 31, and I'm happy to report that we are currently up in enrollment. We are at 1,121 students. Oh, gosh. Okay. Sorry. Compared to 1,015 students at this point last year, which is a 10% increase, per credit hours, we're at 8,082 credit hours compared to 6,958 credit hours for a 16% increase. There's still a month to go, so that'll fluctuate, but that's where we are right now. We held Senior Night this past Tuesday night in the library. We invited all of the seniors in our service region to come out and get assistance with their admission application, their FAFSA, get advised, and get started. We did have around 25 seniors and their parents and family members come, so we were hoping for more, but we think that speaks to the work that's already being done throughout the year with the staff going to the high schools and getting them started. For Board of Trustees Scholarship, I know Dr. Barrett mentioned at the last meeting that those applications were in review by the committee, and those have been selected. Kaia Hunter in Financial Aid, she's the point person for Board of Trustees, and she's done a phenomenal job organizing this. And this year, we went back to the classrooms to do the surprises, which has been really neat. You know, when COVID started, we started with the yard signs, but now we're back in the classrooms surprising them. I know Megan, you were part of it, Dr. Barrett, and a lot of people in this room, so thank you for bringing that energy. A lot of great reactions from students, some utter shock, some smiling emotions. So we've done all the schools, except I think we have Belmont tomorrow and then Union on the 16th, and we'll wrap that up. Upcoming events, we have One Stop Enrollment Day on April 17 coming up. Graduation will be on May 8 at 10:30 and 1:00 p.m. We have over 100 graduates who will be participating in each ceremony. And then my last update, I think about a year ago, I mentioned that we were going through a website overhaul design, and so it actually happened. It launched this past Tuesday. We had a team of six staff members from different divisions who created this site, put in a lot of hard work. We're very grateful for it, and it's going to pop up any minute. Okay. So I just want to glimpse at it, the hero video that Lance Bass and his team put together really showcases our campus and our actual students and learning happening, so we're very happy with how it looks. I won't take up too much time, but I do want to show you one more feature that we've had a lot of positive feedback about, and that's our program pages. So whenever a student checks out a program that loads... So in the industry area, like if they go into commercial heating and air conditioning, it actually feeds information from our academic catalog, so the outcomes and the courses and all that good stuff actually integrates with our website now. So you can see the courses, you can actually click on the courses. I haven't tested in here, so I'm a little nervous about the load time, but bear with me. But you can see the course description, and it actually links to the schedule. So you can see also sections, once it pulls up. Sorry, it's a little slow. But it's a great feature that we didn't have before in our previous website, and it does work well, I promise.
That's nice.
Yeah, we're very happy with it.
It's easy.
Yes.
Need to have that sort of seamless integration.
Yes. Let's get off of that page. It does happen. Go test it, Edgar Holmes, I promise. I did it at mall.
It does work. I checked.
So a lot of great functions with it, mobile responsiveness, search functionality is great, so we're very happy with it. Yeah. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Thanks.
Oh, thank you.
Next up, Business Services Report, Ms. Holloway.
Good evening. The college requests approval of Budget Amendment Number Eight to the Restricted Current Fund, Fund Two, for fiscal year 2425. This amendment recognizes revised award authorizations, new grants received in the 2425 fiscal year.
There's no questions about this? I call for a motion on Budget Amendment Number Eight.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you. My next item, we are requesting approval of Fund Seven, Budget Amendment Eight, which has been revised so the report reflects actual revenue, revised budgeted expenditures, actual expenses, and updated projects through March 26, 2025.
Any questions about Budget Amendment for Fund Seven? All right, ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a quick comment. Congratulations on a clean audit and the compliance piece. Nothing as a trustee makes you feel better when you get something like this that says that all the internal controls are exactly what they should be. And I know it comes from a lot of hard work from yourself and the rest of your department, so congratulations. And I guess you're just going to be ready for the next audit when they come, right?
Right.
So, but congratulations to your team because it's a nice job done.
It is definitely a team effort. It's college-wide effort, to be honest, but yes.
And I know they get really particular about some things that some days are like really in the scheme of things, you say, really? But, you know, to get something like that with not even one teeny little finding, that's amazing.
Thank you. I will pass it along.
Thank you. Next item is President's Report, Dr. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lots going on, as you can see, on campus. Some notes of events that you're all invited to, but they'll be very busy. It's the pending ceremony for nursing the day prior to graduation, May 7, at the PAC. We have the athletic award ceremony coming up in April 24, I believe. Ms. Schrader mentioned the BOT scholarships. Very glad we're back in the high schools rather than being chased by dogs and trying to find... Putting signs on the wrong houses in Dixie County. It was always a highlight of my day, so I'm glad about that. But the kids, it really was an exciting thing to be able to do that with some people. Going to a more serious issue is governmental affairs. Happy to report that when there's projects on the facility sides in the legislature, when you have them on both the House side and the Senate side, it's a good process to have. And this year, we have two projects that have been both approved on the House side and the Senate side to go forward, which is with the final budget, hopefully, a 750K project for HVAC in the Howard Center and 250K HVAC project at the Automotive Center. Both very, no, we went very small this year with a tight budget year, but needs that we really need to have taken care of. So those are pending out there, and we are optimistic from our group that we should be okay with that. Another reminder, another thing that's happening this next month, nothing, end in May is the annual high school scholarship nights, then most of the staff go attend, and many of you attend, I know, because you have scholarships and so forth at each of the schools. And the Dixie County one, I think, is the Saturday after graduation, which is always a famous time to go, and I will be there again this year. So it's always a highlight of my day. Strategic planning has been ongoing for our campus. Christine is not with us tonight, but she's been working diligently in that. As part of our workshop, I think we'll start talking about the strategic plan. It'll be ready in May to talk about with the trustees. So we have a few more things to do with that, meeting with students and one other group. Some other issues that I want to just tell you about, not issues, but good things happening. The gym floor, the Howard Center floor is being done. It's about three-quarters of the way there. We only have three, four weeks till graduation, so it better be done. And it will, it's looking really nice, and you'll see a new paint. And it will, it's looking really nice, and you'll see a new paint in that Howard Center. And that goes along with our PAC that many of you have seen. So now the most too visibly used by the public will have state-of-the-art and really look nice for the campus, nice for our students, and nice for our community. So I'm very happy with that, and more to come in the Howard Center with some things that we're going to be doing with funds that we've gotten and hopefully funds through the foundation for the future. On a negative note, but we're still plugging away, is our STEM Two building has been delayed because of a backlog at the state for approval of the construction. With some of the things that are happening, they don't have enough people to review plans and so forth. So we're one of about 17 schools that have been waiting about a month to get approval. So we're working hard to get that approved through the process. So it has caused a delay in work over there, significant delay. Our tiny house village is awaiting infrastructure permits from the Swan River Water Management. I think they have until next Wednesday to give us an answer one way or another on that project, so we're waiting on that. And we also want to remind you that Ms. Holloway, on top of all her other duties, we received our DOGE list of things that we have to have submitted to the DOGE Committee, the statewide DOGE Committee, and that will be required by April 14th, I think it is? 18th, excuse me. And it's pretty extensive, what we have to have done in the next week and a half. So she's been our point person for that, and I know it's been taking lots and lots of her time. We're confident of what we're submitting and confident in what the response will be back from the DOGE people. And then finally, I do think Ms. Mims was wrong. I usually don't say that because she'll bat my head off. Graduation is at 1:30 on May 8th, 1 o'clock. So just so you, so I know, I point that out for this reason, not to point out that she was wrong. That the May 8th is going to be a very busy day for the board, a very busy day for the campus. We have our graduation ceremonies in the morning at 1:30, and immediately following, we're having our workshop at 3 o'clock. And immediately following that workshop, we'll go directly into the board meeting. And remember, we usually have two workshops, one in May, and then one again in June, and then in June budget, you finalize everything. And Michelle and I have been talking, we'll have an executive retreat over the next couple of weeks, a couple of executive retreats to talk about some things, priorities, and we'll present you with four goals for the college for next year as part of that budget planning. And Mr. Chairman, that is my report.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
Oh, wait, can I? Sorry.
Oh, you're done.
Okay, forget it. I know you want to get out of here. So we're still, okay. Ms. Norris had asked me, well, yesterday sent me a document that I had seen earlier, a few days earlier, about Florida Gateway College, not about Florida Gateway College, but about the Florida Chamber of Commerce, that they come up with these pillars, and then one of the pillars is they suggest, and they list through data, the 30 top occupation and demand careers for regions and also the state of Florida. So she asked, she showed it to me, and I compared what we had, and out of the 30 for our five-county service area plus Alatua, out of the 30 highest paid, we currently have 21 out of the 30. And we anticipate four additionals. So in the next year or so, we'll probably have five out of the top 30. And in your packet, we did this really quick, Christine did it for me. I'd like to present that a little bit more to you in the May meeting, but you do have those figures in front of you. So I wanted to get that to you. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry about that. I didn't want to, I ran around the last hour or so to get that done. So that's my figure of the day, done, so, okay.
Well, that shows some good planning.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions, Dr. Barrett? Okay, topics for future meetings. If any board member has any topics for future meetings, if they'll let us know, then we'll make sure they get on the agenda.
Something I want to make sure we're mindful of, you know, we get to a meeting like this, and it's like, numbers are better, we've got amazing things going on, we've got people being put in the right positions to continue to help us succeed. As a board member, I want to make sure, and I'm going to ask this of you, President Barrett, what do we need to be doing to make sure that we ensure your happiness in this college and the leadership? And so things that maybe we could do, because when we look at these reviews that are glowing and when we have these moments where, you know, a meeting that goes, you know, it looks easy, right? Because we're up here and things go very quickly, but it's hours and hours of grinding it out and doing work and like succeeding on so many different levels. And that leadership comes from you, President Barrett, and so that direction comes from you. And so the way we go as an institution, you know, I think it's easy to take for granted that, okay, we're approving this, we're approving that, but like, you know, we've had this for a lot of time to review. We've had this already. We know kind of what we're looking at. I know if there's a numbers question, Suzanne is going to ask it already and have it ready to go. And so, you know, it, these things aren't just easy because they happen that way, they're directed to be that way. And so for me, in this position, I feel like, you know, being totally transparent, I feel like you've had, you know, there have been some moments where, you know, as a leader, you know, we kind of put you in the firing line, and you take a lot of the shots for us, and then we sit back here, and we're like, everything's going great. And so I just want to make sure that whatever we need to do to kind of, you know, have this college offer whatever it is that's the best for you and your position and your family and your life, that we either maintain that or we look at what things we need to be doing. Because, you know, everybody asks for a raise all the time. I don't mean that about you guys, but at my office, that's how it seems to work. Hopefully they don't watch this video. But everybody, and you don't ask for anything, so, except for fairness and kindness. And so I want to make sure, whatever we need to do, that we're mindful of that and that we're good stewards of the care that you're giving to this college and treating it. So, you know, just take a moment, and whatever things that we need to be doing and looking at, you know, and we've, you know, got representation here as far as a lawyer, so we can have the proper interface set and whatever. But I just want to be mindful of that and be a good steward of your time and your heart and your compassion and your drive and your willingness to dedicate to this college so that, you know, if you've got however many more years that we could squeak out of you and you, we, you know, we just wring every last drop of productivity out of you. So I just want to put that out there. And so I know we've got a workshop coming up, but I'll make extra time if it comes down to making sure that we can have this college continue with the level of success that it's had. And if it's, you think we need to be thinking about a different direction, shaking things up, let us know, you know, because often things run so smoothly, we take things for granted, and I don't want to take you for granted.
I don't want to take the staff for granted. It's all about them, not me. So, thank you, Dr.
All right, so you've got a job. And you guys have a job, because you guys work with him way, you know, on a daily basis. And he was an incredibly selfless guy, and so whatever we need to be thinking about, I want to do.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we all echo that sentiment, but thank you for saying that.
I just want to say, I attended Dr. Hall's memorial service. And Jim was there with me, and just, it was really, really lovely and befitting of someone who was such a gentle, humble steward, steward leader. Robin is having, she's holding up well, but I know that if any of you had a relationship with her through her time at this school, at St. Leo's, and with Dr. Hall's dedication to this place, I know she would just really appreciate a card, some kind of remembrance, because, you know, everybody else is moving on in their lives, and she's lost the love of her life. And it was, it was such a beautiful day. I know Jim was there too, and just, so I was really proud to have on my Florida Gateway College pin. She had some memorabilia out in the front as we entered, and, you know, just, and when I heard his children speak about him, it was exactly who we knew as the leader of this college. So I just wanted to make that comment before we, you know, close for the day. We were so lucky to have the right people in the right place at the right time at this college, as colleges benefited so many times from just, you know, divine intervention, whatever you want to call it. But Dr. Hall was one of those people, and so I just wanted to publicly just say thank you.
Just adding that same thing, Suzanne, and thank you for mentioning it, because it was a great ceremony and tribute to Dr. Hall and his family, Robin. I think it fits right in with the other comments that have been made as this college is continuing to grow and meet the challenges of the future and building upon the legacies, you know, and very proud of Dr. Barrett and his team, as has been mentioned, and, you know, guiding, continuing that in the future. So, so thank you for mentioning it.
The warrant register is available for inspection if anyone wants to review, it always is. As Dr. Barrett said, our next meeting is on May 8th. Any of us that can be here for the graduations that morning, great. I suppose we need to be coordinating that. And then we have our workshop at 3:00 and our meeting at 3:30. So it'll be, like I said, it'll be a full day.
Yeah, big, busy day. Big, good day, though.
You going to feed us lunch?
Yeah, we'll feed you lunch.
All right.
We got a couple of Chick-fil-A's, free gifts.
There you go.
You don't eat anymore.
All right. Well.
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
He's had a roll of the day.
Thank you for being here. We'll see you next time.
Thank you. All right.
We've got an open